November fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. This is the Stoughton City Council, and the first item would be the roll call. Clerk Kristin.
Okay, Payton.
President.
Hirsch.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Caravallo.
Here.
Shurlucky.
Here.
Last name, Johnman.
Not in the room.
Uh, Jensen. Can you hear Jensen?
Here.
Thank you. Reeves.
Here.
Conley.
That was Hailey.
Schumacher, yes, Hailey.
Okay, here.
Thank you. Schumacher.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Iaski.
Not in the room.
Thank you. We have ten Alders present and, uh, two Alders, uh, absent in excuse.
Okay, thank you. We are certified of compliance with open meeting laws. There is nobody signed up for public comments, so we'll go right to communications and presentations. Any communications from Alders? Hearing none, I know we have one communication and update from, uh, Gary Becker.
Just wanted to give you an update on the Emmy Roth. We met with Emmy, um, earlier this afternoon, and, um, while they were grateful for the offer, they were a little bit disappointed because it wasn't, um, to the amount that they expected. Um, they're gonna take that back to corporate to find out what they wanna do, whether they wanna go with the full three and a half million dollar installation or scale it back to the one point eight million. Um, but the other development is that we were able to find a funding source that could provide potentially another million dollars to that, a USDA, um, rural energy grant program. And so they're very interested in that, so we may be getting very close to their three and a half million dollars in the end anyway, so we'll see how that goes. That grant application is due December thirty-first, and, um, we'll confirm next week whether they want to pursue it. So, that's my update.
Thank you. And I have one update, uh, for council members. In case you haven't heard, uh, Director Dan Glenn is, uh, taking a position in Minnesota, so he's gonna be working with the city until the November thirtieth. So, that's why you see some items on the agenda tonight, uh, for discussion and, and action. So I wanted to kinda let you know, uh, what's going on there. And then I know we have a couple of communications, um, from Director, uh, Ellinger.
These are actually moot points now. Um, we had some potential concerns that, uh, one of the parcels that is in the Greenspire properties, uh, was still in the city's name as opposed to Housing Authority. The title searches indicated that is not the case, so we do not need to, uh, jump through any hoops at the November twenty-eighth meeting for that.
All right, thank you. Uh, one last time, any communications from council members? Okay, we'll go into our business. The first item would be the consent agenda. There's three items in there. I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Motion by Jensen, is there a second? Second by Alder Person, Shurlucky. Any discussion or anything you'd like to have acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. That would take us to... Okay, one abstention, Alder Person Lagaki, thank you. Um, that would take us on to, um, item number six, R one sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-three, and you might recall that this one here, um, we had a motion and a second, and then it was postponed at the last meeting. So, I think I can just pick up where we left off, or do I need a fresh motion? It was postponed. Yes. Yeah, there was. There was a motion by Caravallo and a second by Shurlucky. Okay, and, uh, we can maybe, uh, give a quick update on this one, um, maybe, uh, Clerk Kristin, if you could do that.
Um, what I know is that, um, Mike Stacy did clarify with Ashley that, um, she applied for bed and breakfast, and, um, in regards to the alcohol license that had been issued to the establishment that has been surrendered along with a letter from Ashley, so, uh, that part of the, um, the licenses, that is no longer in effect. So, I don't know if Director Sheil wants to talk any further about the bed and breakfast versus Airbnb, but, um, Ashley Kersh is online as well and can answer questions, too.
Yeah, the commercial indoor, the commercial and short-term rental, like a B and B or a, um, VRBO is, requires some buffer yard requirements that can't be met. Therefore, she understands the need to go through the, uh, bed and breakfast process, and that's what she's understanding to be the, the use that's being approved for this site, bed and breakfast, not a short-term rental.
Correct, yeah. That's, yep, bed and breakfast is what I'm applying for.
Okay, so, we appreciate you being here, and we just wanted to get that clarification. I think it was kinda co-mingling of terms, but it's, it's clear that Ashley and to us, the expectation is the bed and breakfast, so that's what's under consideration. Does anybody have any questions on the motion?
I guess, maybe either Rodney or Ashley, could you just walk through, 'cause I know there's a number of different businesses in there, you're still doing the sauna, is that gonna be separated from the living space for the bed and breakfast? And I know you said in your application that you're putting in a shower, so what is the communal space versus what is your other business space? How is that separated?
Um, well, the other business space was basically, I live upstairs, and downstairs is just its own floor, um, so we had a bathroom down there that didn't have a shower, and that was actually just installed yesterday. And then, um, the store has been completely taken out, so I went through everything, got rid of whatever, stored whatever, and it's moving to an online store, so it's not gonna be, the downstairs is just gonna be the bed and breakfast area. Um, so, we're having like cupboards and stuff like that put in there for like a little kitchenette area to do a continental like breakfast type thing, and then they get the entire downstairs. The sauna room is in its own separate room, um, so, I mean, if guests want to use it, I don't have any issues with letting them use it, um, but if it's not acceptable, it is in an area where it can be like, I can, I mean, the breaker can get turned off or the room can get locked, so they can't even enter it, so, um, that, either way, it's not an issue, so.
Is there other permits? I mean, maybe Rodney or Kenny, if she keeps the sauna, does she needs different permits, or is it just all on her liability insurance sort of a thing?
There isn't a, there is not a different permit necessary through our office.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions on this one? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, next item is R one seventy-three of two thousand and twenty-three. This one was at Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, uh, R one seventy-three of two thousand and twenty-three is a resolution for, uh, billing services agreement with EMS Management and Consultants Incorporated. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, the EMS, uh, does their billing through, uh, through a third-party entity, um, so this, this change will stop my questioning to Dave of what Three Rivers Billing is always, we always have a check for, so now it'll be this other one, um, if we approve it. Um, this just is essentially Three Rivers Billing is, has ceased doing business, um, so EMS needs another way to go about their billing and collection, so EMS Management is the one to go with. Um, the contract remains the same, um, just changing the name on it essentially.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next one, R one seventy-four, that also came from Finance, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R one seventy-four of two thousand and twenty-three is a resolution, uh, to waive the agreement to allow Charles Cor- Quarles and Brady to represent Stoughton Hospital for easement negotiations. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
A little clarification in my words, it, it, it's a waiver agreement, not a wavering agreement. All right, um, this is, uh, Quarles and Brady does, um, Bond Counsel for us, um, but Stoughton Hospital also wants them to work on the easement negotiations with Stoughton Utilities, uh, for their new, new addition. Um, and I believe that, uh, Matt and Rick have said there doesn't seem to be any sort of conflict with having them do that, so we will, uh, put the waiver agreement through if we agree.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, this is something that lawyers are required to do. As a lawyer, you can't represent, uh, because Quarles represents the city as Bond Counsel, cannot also be adverse to the city on another matter without your...
Will you turn your mic on, please?
Sorry, because, uh, Quarles and Brady serves as the city's Bond Counsel, um, the city is a current client of Quarles and Brady, so it can't be adverse to the city on another matter unless first it concludes that, um, it can, um, appropriately represent the city, notwithstanding, uh, the fact that it's gonna be adverse to Stoughton Utilities or the city on this other matter. It has to reach that conclusion, and you have to agree to it, so they're asking for your consent. Uh, Rick and I have both looked at their proposed, uh, wa- consent waiver form, and we have no objection to it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries, all right. Uh, the next two items, um, are coming out of Finance. Must be important, we have two attorneys, and we have the Redevelopment Authority Chairperson, Pete Manley, in the crowd, so there must be something going on here. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, this is R one seventy-five of two thousand and twenty-three. This is a resolution to enter into the real estate purchase and sale agreement on the Stoughton Riverfront Development LLC. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, we have seen this one a number of times, and, and here we are with it again. Um, not very much has changed within the overall agreement, except adding in some additional milestones that the developer must, uh, achieve.
All right, thank you. Attorney Dragney, do you wanna highlight anything, or Pete, you're welcome to come up and speak if you wish to.
I think it would be helpful for Pete to update you on where, on what the RDA's, uh, action was on this and share his perspective on it.
Sure, thanks. Um, I was here a few weeks ago to speak with you folks about the, uh, upcoming agreements, um, and we were talking primarily at that time about, uh, issues that turned out to be not, uh, not pertinent to the, not problematic, um, the, well, I'll call them penalties that we had, um, discussed, uh, if the developer did not meet certain standards, turned out to be well-written into the agreements, uh, to where I don't, uh, um, Matt didn't feel, and I was in full agreement that they were really necessary. There were some issues that came up, uh, from the, from Kurt Brink that I think could be defined as simple misunderstandings. He was sort of outraged that, um, that he would not receive payment on, for remediation until the end of the project. That was simply not true, it'll be, you'll be paid during the project. Uh, once he knew that, he, I would say, turned around immediately and was perfectly delighted to agree to all the points that Matt first put forth in his outline to Kurt that, uh, specified all of the issues that would be in the agreements, and then to the actual agreement. And, um, while it was a tense couple of weeks and, and, uh, not uneventful, we had a lot of phone calling, um, it went fine, he signed the thing. We were delighted at the RD, at the last RDA meeting last week to approve recommendation of these agreements to you guys. It, the vote was unanimous and enthusiastic. We do have, uh, benchmark deadlines clearly defined in the agreement. The first one was last week, last Wednesday, um, he signed it that afternoon. Good for us. Um, the next one is March first. We'll be looking toward that date. You know, we'll be tracking it very carefully to try to hold him to that date. I think that, uh, and I can speak for the RDA on this because everyone said so, that we are delighted that the project looks like finally it might move forward. I think that the developer does understand these benchmark deadlines, and here we go. So, like I say, we, the RDA is recommending that you guys approve this, we recommend it unanimously and enthusiastically. Questions, I'll take questions, I'll probably defer to Matt, but I'll be delighted to get questions.
Any questions from council members?
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks. Well, that was easy. All right, uh, hearing no questions, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. And then the second item is related to it, that one also went through Finance as well. Don't go too far.
All right, um, this is R one seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-three, um, resolution to an agreement to undertake development on Riverfront Development Phase One, so moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
Yeah, this one, uh, in, in addition to the real estate agreement, uh, this is just the agreement, um, for the development to move forward into Phase One.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was referring to both those agreements when I was talking, uh, a minute ago. Um, the, the, uh, sale agreement and the developer's agreement are tied together necessarily, one goes with the other, and, um, although, of course, they are two separate agreements, we, in all of our discussions, attempted to blend them together, as I just did. That's all I've got. You have another question?
All right, hearing no questions, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, the next, uh, several items are coming from the Personnel Committee, that would be Alder Person Reeves.
Resolution, R one seventy-eight, two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the restructure of the Public Works Department, combining the Public Works and the Parks and Rec creation departments into one centralized department, implementing the attached organizational chart, and I saw move.
And is there a second? Second by Alder Person Shurlucky. Alder Person Reeves.
Um, well, whenever there's a departure of anyone, it, there's always an opportunity to look at, um, job descriptions and, um, restructuring and, you know, look at ideas for efficiency and what's best for the city as a whole, and so that's what we did with this particular, um, restructure recommendation, and I, and Director Gillingham is here as well, if you wanna add to that.
So we have a policy that we have to follow whenever there is that departure, and that falls under our policy and procedure manual, under hiring policy for leadership, and it states that the mayor and the director of human resources shall inform the personnel committee, which we did, and, um, then at that point, we start to do our evaluation of the position description to see if changes or updates are necessary. The personnel committee will meet to discuss the position description, which is what we presented to them at our last meeting, and then any potential changes. So we followed our policy, and, uh, dating back, Tim, how many years ago would you say that we first started this discussion when you were an Alder? Is that about eight years ago?
Yeah.
Eight, nine years ago?
It was probably in that range.
Okay, so back then, when Tom had left, he was the prior director of the Parks and Recreation Area, we had talked briefly about, um, doing this type of combination. Um, we didn't really have a lot of traction, I know you voted against, uh, staying with the same process at that point or setup, and, uh, we've been talking about it, you know, over the years, knowing that to gain efficiencies and involving Director Abear, um, there's a lot of efficiency to be gained by moving the group together, not only through the org chart, but also physically. There's a lot of conversations ad hoc, um, walking down the hallway, things that can be gained by having this group totally together out at PW, as well as being able to better coordinate, uh, the activities when we're looking at beginning to end, so the start of the park all the way through who's maintaining the park. It just makes sense that that synergy, uh, falls with under one director. So what we've asked for is, um, authorization with the resolution that Alder Person Reeves just read to you, to combine these groups to be able to have the, the gained efficiencies, and then have it falling under, um, Director Abear, and having a superintendent in place under the Parks and Recreation. If you notice, we also, there's another, there's a change on here, we moved the city forester also under the recreation superintendent. Because of the direct correlation between what's happening within parks, recreation, those areas, um, Director Abear had said that this would be a much better fit than having it fall under the fleet mechanic or the street supervisor. So this is our recommendation, following the policy. We had, uh, unanimous approval through the personnel committee, and feel that this is the best way for the city to move forward from both a financial aspect as well as an efficiency standpoint. Thank you.
And I would just add, you know, part of the rationale was, as AJ explained, was to get everybody under one roof, and some of the efficiencies that'll be gained is she elabor, uh, you know, elaborated on was the communication, and I think we call it spontaneous, um, collaboration, I think is the term that, uh, somebody came up with.
Yeah.
And really, uh, having that opportunity, whether they're working on the CIP together, or what's going on in the field, or what challenges, um, you know, they're being met with, and, and how they might address them as a team, uh, together. And some of the other efficiencies that we would gain is currently, we have, uh, adminis- assistant position in City Hall, working specifically for Park and Rec, and they also, you know, help in some of the other areas of City Hall. Well, if we move these positions all out to the Public Works Building, we no longer need to have an administrative assistant out there because we have an office manager, so that frees that person up to, um, do other things out in the field. Um, and a lot of that is, you know, weather-driven, there's tight timelines on mowing and those sort of things during the regular season, and it really provides more flexibility in that area, as well as supporting the recreational supervisor position, which works with the coaches, the volunteers, the referees, um, and, and organizes the fields and, and really is out there making sure that our programs are, you know, being done efficiently and effectively, uh, for our youth and adult programs. So, you know, we think those are really just a couple of, you know, quick examples of where we can gain efficiencies, plus we believe it also gives us some redundancy as far as working with the office manager on some cross-training in that area. The office manager does some of the billing, as well as, um, you know, data entry, um, answering the phone, handling walk-ins, as well as doing, uh, multiple, uh, packets for meetings. Uh, right now, the, currently, the Park and Rec Director has been doing that themselves, and we think that, you know, that's work that can be done and delegated, and we'd like to see that occur as well, so we can work more collaboratively on the bigger picture items. And really, in practicality, this reorganization, uh, really, instead of having a Park and Recreation Director reporting directly to me, we're proposing a Park and Recreation Superintendent that would report to the Director of Public Works. And, and, and quite honestly, I think that that's really a better situation anyway because they'd be in one building, they're working on field maintenance as well as programming, park equipment, trails, trees, pretty much everything anyway. But I really think that, you know, we'll be better served as a community under this structure. But that's kind of the rationale behind it, we certainly would open it up for any questions or comments or concerns. Uh, President Hirsch.
Sure, sit back, I have a lot of comments on, on this because I'm not in agreement. I'm in agreement with some of it. I do agree that, uh, the park maintenance and forestry is better suited under the Park and Recs Director, like in so many communities, and I can name those off, all the surrounding communities, that have a Park and Recs Director that have, um, forestry, recreation, maintenance underneath there, like Sun Prairie, Fritschburg, Middleton, Verona, Cottage Grove, Jefferson, Ford Atkinson, The Forest, O'Conamock, and Moro. All those are similar size to Stoughton, and they all have a separate department for Park and Recs, and they all, most of them contain the maintenance and the forestry as well. So I do agree, by combining those, that is crucial. I also agree that having the Park and Recs Department at the Public Works Building is also good. I think that is true, that they shall be housed, and yes, having a separate, a department just like at City Hall where there's multiple departments and they call us, having two departments down there, they'll have those same kind of efficiencies. What I don't agree with is having Park and Recs under Public Works. That is not what all these other communities, surrounding communities have. The only ones that do have Park, uh, Public Works and then Pub, um, Park and Recs underneath them are the big communities, like Madison, Beloit, Janesville, but they have divisions which basically are similar to our departments, and under Public Works is also, in those areas, are also planning. So if we're gonna follow that model, then Rodney's position and his department needs to fall under Public Works, too, if we're gonna follow those big city models of what goes under Public Works. The other thing is, so, I also like that, um, as you had said, Stoughton is increasing in the number of parks trails throughout the city, and the city is growing, and which adds a more and higher level of management. Um, one of the reasons, given, um, many community members, in fact, was talking to Patrick before this meeting, is that they come to Stoughton because of our parks. Let's not diminish that role and the importance of parks, let's, you know, continue to have that department be robust and reactive and visionary for our community. That can't happen if there's another layer of bureaucracy on top of a director. They lose their autonomy, they lose their leadership role within the seat, city leadership because they're no longer a director, they're, therefore, they're no longer at the table when the leadership gets together. That's, you know, that is proven with the last director, not a good thing. When new development comes in, that, what they need to be is at that table, because what has happened in the past, the other directors get together, figure out, talk to the developer, and then all of a sudden, parks is an afterthought, and then when we meet with them, or the director meets with them, they realize that where they're gonna put the park is... with them, they realize that where they're going to put the park is not in the right place that the parks director or the Park and Rec Committee would have suggested it. They're taking down natural areas. It's not in a good location. It's not, it doesn't fit. By having them at the table at the beginning has proved to be better and more beneficial for the developer. It's less frustration for them and better for the city. So also, next thing is, we also tried this efficiency of moving another department into another existing department. We tried this with utilities finance director and the city finance director. By combining those positions and having that, what happened? We overburdened that combined position to the point where that person left. We have an excellent, excellent public works person. I do not want him to be overburdened. I want him to stay. I don't want him to, like, leave. And then I also want a robust, you know, Park and Recs department, that somebody that can come in, we can get a good director that comes in and is ready to move us forward. And so that's another thing. Last thing is, with the added responsibility, he's now on the public works director, I'm sure in a couple of weeks, we're going to get a new position description for him, asking for more money. I would say, let's use that money that's in anticipation and hire a good Park and Recs director. We have strong departments now. Let's keep them strong. Let's not start changing things and overburdening already directors. And let's keep leadership as true leaders throughout all our departments. And so that's what I would suggest. And I guess, I'm just looking at our surrounding communities that are all like size and having 10 of the surrounding communities doing, having a separate department for Park and Recs is what I recommend. Obviously, it's a proven way to do it, and why, why change it?
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
If I could just add to that?
Pardon me?
If I could just add to that or?
Oh, sure. You want to respond or?
Yeah, yeah, if I'm allowed.
Sure.
Yeah, Alder Hirsch, I certainly respect all those comments. And there's obviously a lot of validity to all of them. Looking at the org chart that's on your screen right now, we feel is an efficient way to operate one department that incorporates all of the different activities that we do within the other city. Right now, we have park maintenance and then recreation and parks planning on separate entities. There, there's a rift between the two. And it's nothing personal. I mean, we try to work together and we have done very well. However, the, the structure itself is ripe for miscommunication. So it's not anyone's fault. It's just the way logistically we're set up, structurally how we're set up. We feel combining our forces together makes us only stronger, which makes us able to, you know, provide that much, you know, better quality service to the public. My job as the director would be to knit these groups together and to support the recreational superintendent and then carry those things forward to our leadership. But I want you to know that the superintendent does have a seat at the table, may not be at our division head meetings that happen once a month. But at the different planning meetings, this person would be there and would have an active role to be a part of the parks planning and coming to develop. And they are the park planner, as you'll see in the, the next agenda item, it talks about their job description. That was first and foremost is to capture that planning aspect, and they are that person. My job as the director is to knit all this together and make sure that we're moving forward as a collective. And furthermore, I, I would not ask for more money to do this. That's not what this is about. It's not a power grab. It's nothing like this or like that. It's for to create synergy. I would not accept any more money if that's what's going to be proposed. That's not what it's about. So I want to take that off the table.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Person Butler?
I'm relatively new here, and I don't really know you very well, Director Abear. And I really appreciate your comments. That said, I will say, in my limited time in this particular role, I've had three or four people within my ward talk to me, and they've all talked about how excited they are about the expansion of our parks. I was surprised, excited about the paved paths. I expected this one individual to actually be not real thrilled about it, but was really excited about it. And so I want to second President Hirsch's concern that, that the focus on the development and the growth of our park system may suffer inadvertently due to a combination of roles.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. And I would just add, you know, as part of our conversation, you know, the points that President Hirsch made about, you know, being robust and, you know, a layer of bureaucracy, we actually think that this will make it even more robust and lessen the level of bureaucracy. And we also feel that the experience that we have out at the Public Works building, not only with Brett but with his team members, we have a park supervisor that is a former Park and Recreation director in Beloit that has a ton of experience, that really wants to help mentor and support this realignment. Because that person, you know, also takes a lot of pride in the work that's going out on the field and welcomes, you know, more dialogue and more collaboration. And I think, you know, quite honestly, you know, from the outside looking in, I can certainly understand the points. But from the inside looking out, I can tell you that there's a huge area of opportunity there. You know, being in City Hall on a daily basis and seeing how things operate and how much better they could operate just by simply restructuring and repositioning people in another department. I think, you know, there's, the bar's already been raised, but I think we can raise it even higher. The comparison to the utilities and finance, I don't think is a fair one. Because really what that came down to, we didn't have enough staff and enough support there. And that's why, you know, we made a staffing recommendation that you ultimately approved in the budget to add a person in the finance committee, in the finance position. We just were grossly understaffed in that area. No matter how that position was structured, we just didn't have enough people to get all the work done with the rising expectations of things that Dave articulated in the past as far as not only the, the normal day-to-day, but, you know, the single audits and the ARPA money and, you know, the new governmental standards and those types of things. So I don't really think those are, are good comparisons. But I certainly do take the comments seriously. It's a, it's a challenge to me to show that, you know, what we're doing is right. And I'm going to take ownership. At the end of the day, the buck's going to stop with me. And I would be the first one to come back here and say, you know what? This isn't working. We need to try something different. I'm not afraid to do that. But I really think that this structure will set the new person up for more success because they're going to have more experience around them to help them understand, you know, what we have here in Stoughton, where we want to go, and to do it as, as a team. And I think, you know, this positions us, you know, in the best path to get there. We're going to continue to do the same, you know, activities. Our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan is, we're in the process of doing that right now. As Brett mentioned, you know, everybody is at the table these days when we're meeting with developers, you know, from myself to the planning director, to, you know, the fire department, police, EMS, everybody is there providing input as we work through these agreements. And it's not solely because of one person that made that happen. It's been a combination of players at the table. And that'll continue to happen. And it would have continued to happen even under the current arrangement, but just makes it more efficient to do that. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I did. I think it's also important to share how we arrived at this. The collaboration started at ground zero. When Dan gave his notice, we met with Tony and had discussions with him, who's the individual that's currently in the recreation supervisor position, and asked him, Tony, what do you think would be the best setup for this? Then he continued to sit at the table with us, having the discussions with Brett, talking about the title, what do we think would work best? You know, just getting his input, having been an employee within the department. He did ask me probably about six months ago if it would be possible to move out to Public Works, just to increase the, the communication between him and Mark and Brett. So this is following the lead that he also had laid out and is in support of. And I think it shows very well what Brett is saying. It demonstrates that, you know, the collaboration will definitely increase. There's always a voice at that table from the way that Brett manages. I know Jonathan had mentioned he doesn't know Director Abear very well, but I can tell you that that's a, a fine running machine out there, fine tuned machine. And his, as he's talking about knitting this together, pulling the group together. As we said, park supervisor Edwards used to be the director in Beloit and, you know, wants to help mentor whomever is in that position as he's getting ready to sunset. So we'll, we'll have a departure there within a couple of years. So I think the collaboration, the having a voice, this is the way we're going to do it. Not having the separation or the line in the sand that we currently have now. And Brett said it so eloquently. It's a, there's a small rift there, and we need to try to do whatever we can to eliminate that and make sure that everybody has a voice. So that's our, our goal and where the, the thought process came here and who was involved. Thank you.
All right. I think it's Alder Person Caravelo. Did you have your hand up?
I thought either that or your flash. Unless there's somebody else that was, that was, wanted to offer some comments. I'm in agreement generally with, with what Regina said, and I'm actually glad that she was able to do a lot of comparison with other communities because I was not, did not have a chance to actually look into that. I was very curious about how other communities get these jobs done and how they're formatted and organized. I do think that efficiencies can be found, if there's room out at Public Works, to move Parks and Rec out there and kind of take away one of those levels of separation so that there is better communication in that regard. I would really prefer, I think, at this point, keeping parks, since we're a growing community and there's more parks and there's more trails and there's more stuff going on in that regard, is keeping Parks and Rec as its own leadership position. I just think that would be smart for us to do if we can, you know, if we've got funding to do it, if we can figure out how to do that. And that is, yeah, that's generally, I think, what I've got. I just think that would be a, if there's room at Public Works for all, all of those positions, I don't think that would be a bad way to go. Another thing also, I'm wondering if it would have been prudent. I know that if it's a, the policy is for, if there's a vacancy to go to personnel, it would have been, had there, if there's time afforded to do so, it wouldn't have been a bad idea to float this past rivers and trails and parks and rec, just to make sure everybody understands what's happening. Wouldn't have, I think, would have been a little bit, as a, just as, as a service to the folks that serve on those boards, let them know and get their input.
Sure. And I think, you know, my response would be, you know, it's a policy decision that, you know, ultimately needs to be made by the elected body. My job is, is to bring it to your attention and make a recommendation. We would certainly communicate, you know, to, to the various committees, you know, you know, what transpired and the rationale behind doing that. So, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we need to make a decision, you know, and it's, it's a management decision. It's not a community decision. That's what we get hired to do. That's what we get elected to do. So, you know, that's the way I look at it. Even the discussion here, I think somebody mentioned the word division. I feel it here. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to eliminate that division and, and work more collectively together. And I think this, this arrangement offers us the opportunity to do so. Because, you know, just observing for the last several years, and quite frankly, we wanted to move everyone out to Public Works, and that created division with an individual. And now we're in a position to do that. So, you know, that is part of, part of the recommendation to do that now is because, you know, I've respectfully not forced it in the past, or I might have been able to. And, you know, I can just make a decision and do that. I chose not to because I didn't want to create even more division. Now we have an opportunity to, you know, bring that all together and work toward common goals and not have any miscommunication, whether it's internally or externally. I think that having it all under one roof really, really helps with that. The expectations will be much more clear than they were in the past. They've always been a gray area, you know, dating back well before our time when, when the structure was set up where it was kind of separate, but yet, you know, Public Works did the maintenance in the parks. It's, it's unique to Stoughton. And, you know, all the equipment's out there, but we have staffing in another office and it's really awkward to communicate. So, you know, I'm, I'm pretty firm on, you know, determined to make this work because I've seen how it's operated in the past. And quite frankly, I spent a lot of time unnecessarily, you know, trying to referee. And I, I just don't want to do that anymore. And I'm confident that Director Abear will make sure that that doesn't happen. And really, that's the main difference is who that person reports to. And, and the experience level that's out there and the expertise is much more than they'll get from me at City Hall in that area. And that can only improve our park and recreation plan. So, you know, I, I certainly talk to people out in the community as well. And we have been able to raise the bar in spite of that. And I think the bar will continue to go higher. The committee has done great work. You know, they put in a lot of time and effort to, to execute the plans that we've invested money for in our budget. We spent a lot of money to do this. We'll continue to invest in our community. I think that is one of the things that, you know, separates Stoughton from other communities in Dane County is our park system and our trail system. And it's, it's really just going to continue to grow. One thing I did want to let you know is, I already have instructed our city attorney's office to take over the application process for the water park project because that was a heavy lift and a heavy strain on the Park and Recreation Director and department as a whole. There's a lot of extra hours committed just to that process. We have expertise in the city attorney's office. They've agreed to, to carry that torch for us. So whoever comes in doesn't have to, to carry that weight. Now, there'll still be, you know, some other things that that person will do as far as grant writing and coordinating some meetings and those sorts of things, but they won't get bogged down in the paperwork. We need more people on the ground. We don't need more directors. We need more boots on the ground out in the field. And that's what this structure does. Anybody else? Alder Person Ljajki?
I believe I saw those, the hands before I went up.
Okay. I want to make sure everyone that didn't speak has a chance to go first, and then we'll circle back for a second crack at it. But either one, I'm fine.
I have two questions.
Sure.
And a comment. The fiscal impact of going from a director to a superintendent, it looks like for the superintendent, the upper pay range is 83.5. What is the current upper pay range for our director? And what is the fiscal, fiscal impact that this is going to potentially have?
There's no impact. We will be either at or under that 83 that's already approved.
Yeah, I'm actually assuming we're going to have a positive impact.
Yes.
So I'm asking, what is the director range right now?
I don't have that with me, Jean.
Do we have an estimate?
It would be, it would be, Jean, it would be the, the dollar amount that I put on there would be what's approved in the 2024 budget for the existing director's position.
So there would be no budgetary impact?
There'd be no impact.
I'm wondering what our savings are. I'm wondering what our savings are and just what motivations could be, so I'm just asking, does anyone know the, the range of our director?
We're not doing it for any cost savings.
We're not doing it for cost savings.
No, we're doing it for efficiency.
Understood, I'm just wanting to understand that information.
Yeah, that was a good question.
Did you have a second one?
I did.
Okay.
And my second question is, you know, I, I see something related that gives me pause, though I, I must say that I'm torn. But I, I do believe that I want Stoughton to grow, and I think the synergy that you're talking about will not come by creating a superintendent. I think the synergy comes when people are truly empowered, and if there were aspects of it that were hard to manage before, I, I understand that. But I, I think moving, if there's room to get everybody under that roof, that's fantastic. I think that's great. But I, I don't know if I agree with the superintendent title. Just one simple parallel that makes me wonder about how, as a city, we're trying to come together, get word out, be accessible. You know, we do really good things. We, we have awarded ARBA money. I love what I've seen with the community foundation. I love that we've earmarked for sustainability and DEI, and none of that word ever got out. And right now, the marketing is through Public Works. We don't have a way, and I just see things getting fragmented, and respectfully, Mayor, I, I think you see this as a synergy, but I actually potentially see it disempowering Parks and Rec. And if there's not fiscal impacts that are great and huge to this, I, I hear a lot about how busy these departments are. I, I'm giving pause, and if we're for growth, I, I am hesitating more, I am trending more towards the director side. I think the more that we can empower and have egalitarian, I'm so glad you feel this, but I, I'm not seeing the whole collective go in a direction that, that I think that this is a good move.
Thank you. Alder Person Reeves?
So I thought a lot, a lot about this because I'm probably on one of the trails every single day except, including, I should say, winter. So Parks and Trails are really important to me, and I think it's probably one of the most important ways we can bring young families to Stoughton. So I, I actually think that this restructure is a good thing. I have, you know, I've been on Public Works every year since I've been on council except for one, and, you know, so I thought, I did think a lot about the, the pros and cons, and I looked a lot at the job description because I wanted to be absolutely sure that this person did have a seat at the table. But whenever I have a question or a comment or a concern about the parks or the trails, to be quite honest, I call Brett, and I would say Director Abarber, whether it was Director Abarber or whomever is in that position, would, I would have certain expectations about their ability to lead and collaborate, be a critical thinker. You know, none of us at this table are experts in everything, but yet we kind of sort of run the city. But we know when to ask for help, we know when to seek out expertise. I've seen that with this director, and again, whether it was this director or if Director Abarber left tomorrow, I would have those same expectations. I have seen a disconnect, I've witnessed that, and I think it's, you know, in my opinion, has been to some degree a detriment. So I'm very protective of the parks and trails and that department, and I would be the first one, if I thought this was not working, I would say, "We need to bring it back and start over." But I don't always think there's, there's been great collaboration, and that's not a personality thing. I think it's just been the structure, honestly. I'm comfortable with the job description because I want to make sure that they do have a seat at the table. But what we need is, I think, somebody who is a great motivator and, and leader and someone who's not afraid to say, "I don't know the answer to this," and a good example is when I was walking through and I had a concern about the prairie burn, and Director Abarber said, "You know what? We don't know enough about prairies." And so he took it upon himself immediately and, you know, got expertise from prairie experts, and the whole prairie burn has been, and you could probably address this better than I at another point, but the prairie management has changed because of his initiative, and he's always followed up. And, you know, so I just feel, and that's how the Prairie Task Force came to be, so I think having someone who is a visionary is really important, and I don't see it as a disconnect, I see it as a positive thing. So, but I, I appreciate, because I had those same struggles when I, you know, talked about this to myself, but I really do feel that the expectation for this director in Public Works would be, you know, the same that we have. If you don't know the answer, you need to find it, but you need to be able to collaborate and be a critical thinker and be a visionary, and I think that I, I'm comfortable with this, so that's where I'm at.
Alder Person Shilaki?
So I'm on the Personnel Committee that approved this along with Lisa, and, or I should say recommended this, and, you know, as a father with a seven-year-old, as with anyone here, we all love the parks, you know, we're, I'm at Virgin Lake Trail Park every day, and we want to continue to see it grow and expand. That's one of the reasons why we fell in love with Stoughton is the dedication to our outdoor and recreation activities that we have here. I, I think what may help alleviate some confusion, which I don't know, this kind of ties into the next agenda item of the job descriptions, are how we changed the director position and into the superintendent position and kind of flushed out responsibilities to those experts so they could really dedicate their time and energy on what matters most to that description, so recreation can truly focus on recreation. So Parks, the Park Supervisor remark, he can focus on that, and the superintendent is freed up to do more of what they're expected to do and not be as overburdened as I think our old director may have been. It, I could be phrasing that wrong, but AJ, am I on the right track with that?
I would say absolutely. Dan's workload, in my opinion, of knowing what he was doing, was just astronomical, and I think that's where we were having the discussions about the better utilization of the resources, having an office manager out there that could help with those lower-level positions, the, or, I'm sorry, responsibilities such as the agendas, the minutes, having a person that's actually able to be at, at those meetings and having the individual who's heading up those areas also participating. So you're absolutely spot on. Thank you.
Is there anything else you wanted to add, or was that it?
No, I mean, and I very much appreciate all of the discussion around this from all points of view because it is a major change and a major shift, but I would say, as someone who was on the committee that recommended this, if this isn't working, you know, again, I would be one of the first to say, "Let's change it, let's review it, and let's find a new strategy to move forward." You know, I, I don't think anything is ever permanent, and so we can always review and, you know, strive for that continual improvement with our structure of our management.
Okay. Alder Person Jensen, did you have your hand up? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Well, I think we're going to get to everyone the way it looks, maybe twice.
Maybe.
Yeah, I'm, I just skipped ahead to the, to the next one and just started reading through the, the job description again, and I don't see anything in the job description that says that this person is not going to have a seat at the table. It said, "Provide leadership support and vision through Parks and Recreation and Trails." That, that's, I know what they're talking about.
Leadership team, that's a big difference.
It's my time, please?
No, I'm just saying, that's the big difference.
Yeah.
Let them have the floor and we'll come back to you.
The only major difference I see is that you're changing the title. That's it. And I know in my, in my working days, there were many different titles that I had, I carried. It didn't change what I was doing. It's still, you know, I had a job to do, I had a job description, I went ahead and I did my job. I don't see where this is going to change anything. The person is, is responsible for, for our parks and recs. Their only thing is that they're, that they're answerable to someone above them rather than directly to the mayor. I really don't see that as a problem. I see this as an administrative request to us to approve this. This is what the administration wants. He has to run the city, and if he sees that this is the best way to run the city, I'm inclined to agree with him.
Alder Person Pete?
Thank you. Alder Jensen makes some good points. I do disagree on a few topics related, because when you make an organizational change, I also think that there's an inherent philosophy change that happens. The organization reflects, the, the philosophy of the organization should be reflected in its organizational chart, should also be reflected in its budget, we're not necessarily talking about budget in this one, but when you change a position to report to what was a peer, that does inherently dilute authority relative to that director position. So you've now, we have now would be, well, we would be placing a superintendent under a director who, at the current moment, has that same level of responsibility. And then changing what our philosophy as the city then, our priorities then make it appear that Parks and Recreation is not as important as it was. Whether or not that's true, I think we are all committed to Parks and Recreation and what our goals are for the future of the city, but when someone were to look at or ask or inquire, it does make a difference to know that a director of Public Works is the one who is overseeing Parks and Recreation. And that's one point. I think another component of the conversations we've been having tonight is about the answer of, "Well, we need to move them into Public Works. It'll help with the communication, it'll help with the synergy of the group." But my question is, how does the organizational change solve that problem when a physical location change appears to be the solution to that problem? The directors, as they are, operating with their groups, if they were in the same building in the same place and had the ability to work together on a regular basis, that might solve some of the relative synergistic issues that we're seeing. And some of the points that were, that were talked about is more of a, "How do we work together?" And I don't necessarily see that just because you move the department under a director, and I wouldn't say make it a lesser department, that doesn't necessarily solve the clashes that can occur between people and the clashes that occur between personnel or the communication tree that should exist. If it's not happening now between the two groups, you move, move them under on a, on a decision tree, how will that reporting change, make a difference in how people are interacting with each other? I have my hesitancy to see that complete resolution of the problem, even over time, because it also lends the opportunity for the Parks and Rec Superintendent to become far less than the Parks and Rec Director in the near-to-long-term future, and I worry about that.
Okay. Anybody else that hasn't already spoke once? All right, President Hirsch.
As I said at the beginning, I liked the new, that everybody's over at Public Works. As everybody said, that is good, even Director Abarber did. I think that solves a lot of the problems. I think some of the big problems was because they were separated and because the way the department is separated right now, you had Director of Park and Recs and the Recreation, but Park Maintenance was under Public Works. All these other communities have figured out that doesn't work. So by putting Park Maintenance and Forestry, Urban Forestry, under Park and Recs Director along with Recreation, that's what all these other communities have done, and that's what I would actually recommend. Move Park and Recs Department over to Public Works and have Maintenance and Urban Forestry, just like these other 10 local communities have done, and have that kind of synergy. And then, yes, you have that leadership, and Brett can also be a leader and help other, you know, this new director out. And then they're on, like, you know, Director Peyton has said, you have equals working together as opposed to one person up above another, and that's never going to build, it's always will make Park and Recs less than, less than Public Works, less than planning, less than, you know, personnel, less than this. They're never at that same level, they're less than, because they're no longer a department. And so they're part of it. They're not at the leadership table with all the other directors, they're longer, they're less than. They have to rely on the Public Works Director to bring them up to speed of what was discussed at the leadership. That's a level of inefficiency, not efficiency. And so I want to see us create a public, you know, Park and Recs Department that is equal to all our neighboring things. If we're going to get a new director or Parks and Recs Superintendent, who are we going to look for? We're going to look at these other communities and hopefully we can get a good one from them, but if, if we have a Park and Recs Superintendent and now they're under somebody when, where they came from, they had their own department, good luck finding somebody that wants to move and be under somebody else. They lose their autonomy, they lose their leadership, good luck on that. If we're looking to, you know, I think if we have some great talent, like you said, that have experience, and why wouldn't they am under a Park and Recs Director if the structure is like that, why wouldn't they help the Park and Recs Director, just like if they were a superintendent? That I don't understand. So I, I guess, I would like to make a motion that we use this new design and have it be under a Park and Recs Department, which includes the Park and Recs Director, the Park Supervisor, the Recreation Supervisor, Youth Center, and the City Forester, creating a solid, good, robust Parks and Rec Department. And I still move.
So I think what I'm hearing is, is an amendment, because there is a motion on the floor. So what you're suggesting is, is we take the...
Everything in green.
Everything in green, and then you're saying, "Change the title from Superintendent to Director."
Right, and move that into its own Park and Recs Department.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lagaki. Okay, so now we can open... So now we can open discussion on the amendment. And, you know, one thing that is obvious from right now, so now what you're doing is, you're taking the responsibilities out of the Public Works, and you're putting it under the Park and Recreation.
Right, because that's where the inefficiency and the problems were, that you had discussed before.
And that's, I'll let Brett explain the specifics, but I think what you're, in essence, doing is you're taking people that are, are trained and do things under, under the Park Maintenance, and you're putting it...
Yeah.
...solely under Park and Recs Department. And I guess Brett, what, I guess you have to walk us through on how that might work, because you know the individuals.
Just a few things, if I, if I may. I've always been about empowering staff, so I hear a lot about, we're taking power away from somebody. I'm, I'm not a power-hungry person. I don't want to be in the headlines. This is all about us doing things for the community. I also think it's important to understand that Public Works, we, we have a vision for parks that coincides with Dan to make our, our park system robust, and to enhance our park system. We take it upon ourselves to put things in the CIP, like adding a park structure, redoing a park structure at Norris Park. We've redone Lowell Park. We've added Trails and Shefalker Park. We do allow that with our in-house staff, because we have the horsepower to do those types of things. We do that, we did that all in collaboration with Dan, to really enhance what, what we do as a group. I'll, I'll say it again, though, I, I really empower staff. I don't flip my staff's wings, so to speak. I want them to, to dream and have a vision, and carry that vision forward. And my job is to make sure that, you know, that we really support that vision and make it come to fruition. But I, I don't want the council to think that Public Works is not about parks, because we are. That's a huge part about a community, is, is our park system. And we only want to enhance. So I, I really want you to, to take that to heart, because it's true. And we've, we've done, ever since I've been here, we've started adding things to the CIP to enhance the parks. Parks is a big part of the community, and we, we look forward to, to even emboldening that for them. When it comes to the, the structure, if you take all that green away, that makes my job a lot easier, then I got essentially the, the streets and the, the fleet. So there's not much left to, to manage. The structure that's on your screen, I, I fully believe that I can, I can help manage that. You know, Alder Hirsch, you, you talk about not having the seat at the, the leadership table. Now, when we have our, our monthly leadership team meetings, you know, and Tim, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we really don't talk about, you know, development-type stuff in earnest, or planning-type stuff in earnest. It's really just getting together as a group and talking about the, you know, what's going on in the city. So that's, that's not the time that we make decisions on, or planning decisions. That's more along the lines of when Yorani may get us together and talk about, you know, planning for a, a new development, or when Dave, when we get together and talk about the CIP. So those are the times we get together as a group, and this person will be along with us at the table to make those decisions.
All right, thank you. I think I saw all the person. I, I didn't see who was first.
Oh, I think you were first. I had a question.
Okay, all the person, Peyton.
I just, I'd like to say, I don't think any of us doubt the intention, Brett, of your leadership and the way that the Public Works is, is being managed. And I think that some of this is about intention versus impact. So the intention is good. The intention of all this is, is efficiency. And I think the attention, intention of everything is to make it so that we can be more robust, be more dynamic, be more synergistic. I'm afraid that the visual impact of what it looks like to have a Parks, a Parks and Recs not be its own department could be detrimental in the long term. And people are people. We're not always going to be at this table. Not everyone is going to be in their positions. Things change. So is the structure going to outlast the people at the table? But I would say for the amendment, I don't agree with the amendment tonight, because I think that what should happen is go back to have a discussion about the things that we've been going on today, and instead of taking a, a very hasty action to move that, which I think I understand where you're coming from, but I think making that decision tonight has some, I have trepidations about making a huge change without looking at it first.
Other person, Reeves.
Well, I think that, so my first question was, I wanted to be clear that the amendment was to move all of the green under the Parks and Director. And I would agree that I think that would not only be hasty, but I, I'm not sure any of us have any understanding of the implications. And I think that would probably set that new director up for a hasty exit. So I, I couldn't support that. Just, yeah, so I couldn't support that.
Sure. Go ahead.
I just, I just want to say, Brett, I, this is not anything against you. I'm just looking at other models from other, the communities. You are fantastic, and I'm just trying to align us with other local communities, not trying to say anything about your management skills. I'm, I, I, you know, I have utmost respect for you. I'm just trying to make sure that our city, going forward, is doing the best we can for, you know, our, our community. And, and your management skills and everything like that aside, I'm just really looking at how to create a good structure for our city going forward.
Yeah, I, I understand, and I, I appreciate that. You know, keep in mind, too, I, I did come from one of those somewhat larger communities in Beloit, and the structure was much like this, where Park and Recreation as a whole was under the Public Works umbrella. So that, that's why I want to, to be as the umbrella. It's not so much just, you know, it's Public Works. It's not. Public Works is made up of a lot of different entities. Right now, it's, you know, fleet, streets, Parks Maintenance, and Forestry. That, that's all the divisions, if you will, under the Public Works umbrella. Park and Recreation, including Forestry, is just now under that umbrella. So it, I, I think there's, I, I don't want there to seem like there's a power struggle, because that's, that's not the case. You know, I, for one, would be happy to, to, you know, along with the superintendent, to create a vision for the parks, you know, that, that incorporates, that's incorporated into the core plan, that obviously Park and Recs Committee has a, you know, takes a look at, and the Rivers and Trails Task Force takes a look at. These are all the things that I can help to, to meld together, because this is what I did in a former, you know, with a former employer, with this structure. So it's nothing new to, to me, or to, to Mark, who is the, the Park Supervisor currently, who can really mentor this person. So I, I forced, I see it as being a, a benefit to the city to allow us to, to work with the new person coming in, to help, you know, make the parks even better. I mean, Dan's done a great job to get us where you are. We got to continue moving forward with those, those visions and, and make new ones.
All right, and I saw Director Gillian. Oh, go ahead, Jean. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think the big thing that, you know, as I'm listening to this, ultimately, you're going to make the decision, and that's, that's your job. But you have individuals such as Director Aribar, myself, the mayor's tasked us with coming up with what we think as the subject matter experts is the best thing for the city to move forward. And, you know, we've spent a lot of time in involving others in what would work best, and create that synergy, create the efficiencies. I would ask that you think about, is it palatable to allow us to try this and see how it goes, so that we're, we are allowing the collaboration as needed? No matter who comes in, we need to surround that person and provide them with the resources that are necessary, that they are able to be successful. And I think through this, this process and what we're trying to set up here is going to create that environment. The big thing right now that we're faced with is not a title. I thought that was kind of interesting. Regina, I liked your thought when you're saying, well, could we recruit a superintendent? And in talking with, I talked with Tony, not that Tony's going to get the job, but he's very interested in moving forward. We talked to him about the title and asked, is that something that would deter a professional that has a master's degree, like you do, in Parks and Recs, while applying? He said, absolutely not, it wouldn't. Now, we weren't setting him up one way or the other. We were really trying to gather information to know that we're setting the city of Stoughton up for success. Again, this isn't something that's going to be laid in stone, and we have to continue with it forever. We had great success, the, the city of Stoughton going the opposite direction, had a city clerk who did not sit at the leadership level. And we made that change when Candy came on, and moved it back into a leadership position. So this isn't something new that we've transitioned in and out of, always due to failure. You had given the example of Jamin. Again, that was a workload issue. The importance here is, no matter who is moving into that position, Dan grew up in the city of Stoughton. He started out as an intern. He interned under, and worked under Tom. No matter who we bring into this, we need to be able to circle around this person and make sure that they're set up for success. And listening to each of those experts, Brett being one of them, it sold me on this idea as well. My job isn't to come here and sell you. My job is to show you what we gathered, what we came up with, and what we think as a group collaboratively is the best way to move forward. So I just want you to think about that as you're making a decision. You do have a group of individuals that you've hired at leadership, all of you have been involved in that, that are coming forth with a plan for you to consider, based on what we know as being involved in the trenches day-to-day, what we think would work best moving forward. We always can change it. But what we're asking for is to be able to make sure that we don't lose traction from what Dan did. This is going to be a big loss for us. Dan has big shoes. We're trying to set up whomever moves into this position, that they're, they have the appropriate people reporting to them, and they have the appropriate people above them. Again, you guys don't know Brett that well. I work with Brett day in and day out. This is not a power grab. It has nothing to do with power. He will, like he said, not cut somebody's wings. He's going to make them fly. And even if we did this just until we get this person up to speed, and you guys determine at that point, maybe it's time for a change, then let's do it. But you have a group of subject matter experts that are, that have bought into this, and this is what we'd like. We spent time on the, the job descriptions. But again, ultimately, it's your decision. We'll live with whatever you give us. But this is what we felt coming together would be the best way for the city to move forward. That's it.
All the person, Legaki.
I want to, I, I think AJ had some really good pertinent things to say, but I want to ask my couple little questions that have occurred to me as I've been listening. Do we have any other superintendents that would be up here to this person in the city, or is this a first superintendent?
This would be our first superintendent.
Thank you. I'm hoping that, I don't know if I'm ready to make a, a vote tonight. I, I think the discussion here is good and pertinent. And I think some excellent ideas have come forth. Like, I find myself looking at this going, you know, if they really were worried about public parks and, and recreation being seen as less than, do we change the title of this department to Public Works, comma, Parks and Recreation? And do we consider having two directors that are clearly identified as where their skillset and focus is, but there is quite a bit of overlap? And do we consider having that overlap, those, that, that area that was seen as, which one is it? When there's big grants, does, does one director, I mean, that is, those are ways by which I find myself wondering how we can go further with this idea. I do think, I agree something needs to be done. I am concerned about losing Parks and Recs as a department, bottom line. There's a few ways that I think that that can be looked at, but I, I think I've, I've shared my thoughts beyond that. That's all I wanted to ask and say.
I appreciate that. All the person, Caravella.
Yes, you are still talking about the amendment. As far as the amendment goes, I think that would be premature to, to jump on to the amendment to make such a, such a huge change. I don't, I don't support that tonight. You know, even if, that would take a lot more discussion, I think. Another thought I did have is that having a, you know, I don't know if this is counter to what I was, previous comments, but there could be a situation where having a Parks and Recreation Superintendent person that would potentially, although the way that this reorganization, I don't know if it necessarily gives them less responsibility, but I was thinking, well, if, if the position afforded the person less responsibility, it might be actually potentially attractive to a new hire, because then they would immediately have perceived less on their plate right away. Just a thought. Another comment that I have is, I'm wondering how other communities, as far as Public Works goes, and maybe this is diverging too far, and if so, let me know, as far as what falls under Public Works regarding, like, a utility situation, water and sewer and electric, because I think we have kind of a unique situation with our, with the way that Stoughton is set up.
Right.
You are correct.
Yeah. Yeah, as a municipal utility, it's a whole separate animal. So some of the comparisons, you might have heard earlier, those Public Works structures may have an involvement in some or all of their utilities' operations. We wouldn't see that here because of the, the structure, and, and really even the way it's funded. So, you know, even though we have that, we still have collaboration. I see Brett's waving his hand on that one, too. Have you experienced that as well? You're muted.
Muted.
And then I'll, we'll get to Ben after that. Can't hear you, Brett.
Yeah, I do have experience with that. I'm not proposing that any means, but again, every, every community is unique. Every city operationally is put together different. But, you know, Regina, I know you mentioned a, a bunch of different cities around us that are, are unique in size, but I, I would say we have to do what's best for, for Stoughton in not look at all these other structures, because, like I mentioned, I came from a structure, being from Beloit, that was much like what's on your screen now, where it wasn't separate. So I, I think the biggest takeaway, though, is that everybody's unique, everybody does it a little bit differently, whatever melds with the community and, and where we're going.
All the person, Haley.
I haven't weighed in, because I haven't really been able to make a decision for quite a while. There have been good, good arguments on both sides of this. I think I'm inclined to trust the operational instincts of the people doing the operations on this. I did want to ask, what is the timeline we're talking about on this? If there were something like, you know, come back next time, in whatever form that would take, would that affect our ability to put out a job posting? I'm not sure we, are we planning to have a second council meeting this, this, the Tuesday? Yeah, I believe we should, right?
Yes, we are at this point.
Okay.
Yep, we are. And I think, you know, you make a valid point. So let me just start off by saying, you know, the easiest thing for us to do... So let me just start off by saying, you know, the easiest thing for us to do would have been just to fill the position as is, because we wouldn't have needed any approval to do that. But just because that's the easiest thing to do doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. So that's why we went through the process and we took our recommendations to the committee, which took extra time, effort to do so. And, and the committee, you know, agreed with, with where we landed on it. I would say that under the amendment, that Park and Recreation Superintendent, making that a director, that would have a budgetary impact, because now you're adding a whole new layer of responsibilities on top of a position that some have argued wasn't up to market rate to begin with. So I really don't think budgetarily, we, we can, you know, we're in a position right now to even, to approve the amendment. And even if we were, I really don't think that's necessary. You know, I, I feel pretty strongly about where we're at. But right now, we're looking at the amendment, so I think we should wrap up our conversation on that and then see where that takes us. Does anybody else have any last thoughts about the amendment?
May I answer Alderman Healy's question?
Yeah.
Okay, so Alderman Healy, to answer your question, I think everybody around the table here understands what our hiring climate is right now. It's very difficult not only to attract, but to retain staff. So I want to be able to, as soon as possible, get this position posted. Dan's last day is scheduled for November 30th. Like I've said, there's huge shoes there to fill. We've talked with Tony about stepping in in the interim and helping us out. I don't want to, if at all possible, delay getting a position posted, because there are positions out there and people are looking. I know that Tony's been approached. I know he's been in the process at other locations. And we want to make sure that not only lose that candidate, but anybody else that's out there. So it's, it's being timely, it's getting a good position description out there, having clear direction for the individual, knowing that they have support. If they're going to leave a position right now, they want to know that they're making the right decision. And I think, again, going back to the structure, it's important that we have something that surrounds that person and gives them what they need to be out of the gate successful.
All right, anybody else have anything on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so the amendment fails, so that would take us back to the original motion? Any more discussion on the original motion? Alderman Legaki.
I would like to offer, I don't know if it needs to be an amendment or a suggestion of editing. I would like the name of this department to be considered Public Works, comma, Parks and Recreation. I don't want just Public Works.
Which, which title are you talking about?
Whether it's the, whether it's the title of this organizational chart that could be approved as part of this resolution, whether there's anything in this resolution calling it just Public Works, I would like the name of it to now be Public Works, comma, Parks, and per stand Recreation.
So you're talking about the, the Director of Public Works title?
I'm, I'm talking about this resolution in front of me, Resolution 178. The chart as well as the language in this. If we're bringing this to vote, I'm just making a strong stand. We are, I do not want to lose Parks and Recreation and Title and Vision. And I don't think you're proposing that, I want it in here.
But then Brett would be the Director of Public Works and the Director of Park and Recs. Is how you would, organizationally, what you're proposing that would be.
And organizationally, that's how this chart looks. And so I am just saying that I want that considered right now. And if that is not a consideration, I would be voting no.
Is that, is that an amendment?
I would, I would want to table and for us to, but I understand timing. So I, everything I see that says Department of Public Works organizational chart, I want us to think that there's three bodies there. And we'll change that.
Okay.
And that is my suggestion, or edit, or amendment, whatever it needs to be.
You choose, is it an amendment?
Any, any, any parliamentary suggestions? I am offering an amendment to this resolution that we offer the title of Public Works, comma, Parks and Recreation, when it is just being referred to as Public Works.
All right.
Jean, can you then clarify? Okay, so you changed the title of the department, but because of that, then Brett is now the Director of Public Works and Park and Rec. That's what you're saying? And so now he has two titles?
Wait, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that he has, he has a long title. He has a title of Director of these three bodies.
So he is.
That is, that is what is being proposed. I am just offering an amendment to get to things that I want. And I'm also thinking about offering that we table and ask them to consider all of these things, but if, I don't know if it's going to go there.
I heard an amendment.
I'm sorry, I, I was not playing poker. I was totally showing my hand. And so may I just say, please let my amendment only be the thing I am, I am asking for at this time.
We need a second to it.
I'll second.
Okay, a second by Butler. So to be clear, what you're amending is you're, you're saying that we're going to change the title to Director of Public Works, comma, Park and Recreation?
Yes.
And then in the job descriptions that describe that title, we're going to change it on all those locations as well?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds, you got it?
But the structure would remain the same, as proposed.
Yes.
Correct, I have not offered anything there and I don't know if anybody else will.
All right, so I see one hand up right away.
I, I am not going to be in favor of this amendment because you also have ramifications for the department all across the board, about rebranding, retitling with Public Works. And I, I think that's, I think still, Jean, that, that the title change doesn't necessarily solve the problem again. So I'm kind of like, I appreciate, I appreciate the amendment process and the offer for it. I'm not sure it quite hits what we want to do. And there are some other consequences administratively that come with that on the back end.
Can I comment on that?
Who's that?
Director Ebert, go ahead. Yeah, so this term understands, you know, Public Works is really a generic term for all the divisions in public work. Right now, like I, I talked about, we have Fleet, Streets, Forestry, and Parks Maintenance. Those are all divisions of public work under the, that umbrella. But Public Works is not any one of those things. It's all of them put together in, in the same package. So to, so to say, Public Works and Parks Recreation is somewhat redundant in, in this arena, if you will?
Well, and I think that's why, you know, we came up with the superintendent position, because it's more distinguished than, say, the supervisor title. So that, I think that's how that term came to be. Because we do have a street supervisor, we would have a park supervisor, and a recreation supervisor, and then the superintendent would be a level above those. So that's how we landed there. Maybe we didn't really articulate that, that clearly. But, you know, to Brett's point, yeah, I, I think it is, Public Works is generic. It could mean utilities in some communities. It could mean, you know, golf course maintenance in another, or aquatic center maintenance in another. So it is pretty interchangeable.
We have a cemetery, I forgot to put that in there. We have a cemetery.
Right, so Alderman Legaki.
As I offer this amendment, it's, it's, it's just in trying to listen to the values of what I've heard people say around where, what Parks and Recreation and growth in this community and seeing it as, I, I am willing to be that definitive about if we are going forward with this idea at this time, and it's not tabled, or we don't come up with yet a different amendment. I, I would like the, the naming of the department to include Parks and Recreation if we are folding it in.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Alderman Schirvel.
Just to kind of go off of what Brett was saying, you know, in, in the corporate world, my, my day job, often it's not apples to apples. But for instance, there might be a markets division that has marketing, sales, and product within it, and the head of that is not called the Director of Marketing, Sales, and Product. It's Director of Markets. And to Brett's point, it is that umbrella term. And I understand we, we want to have the visibility of Parks and Rec within there, and I'm 100% for that. But I, I also don't want to conflate what we're seeing on the org chart versus what it will be in reality, in, in these people's positions and what they do. You know, I, I think that it's, to me, the org chart is not as scary as it might appear. I, I know it's a big move, moving things, but in, in terms of changing the title that's in there, I guess I should just speak to that since that's what the amendment's about. I don't know that having the title in there will do anything to change what we're, our intended purpose or support behind Parks and Rec. I don't know if I phrased that right, but yeah.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so we have an amendment to change the, the Director of Public Works to Director of Public Works, comma, Park and Recreation. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
No. I would say the noes have it. Everybody in agreement? Okay, so that would take us back to where we started with the original motion. President Hirsch.
I guess I would like to send this back to committee. It seems like there's a lot of discussion and, and I, I think we have a good start. I, I think it needs to be flushed out and if we're going to be really thoughtful about this new position and make sure that they're set up for success and it reflects our community, I'd like to send them back to committee. But I also would make a recommendation that that Personnel Committee actually offers invitation to the Park and Recs Committee, who seems how nobody on Personnel is on Park and Recs and has no experience with what Parks and Recs actually is about, that you form a joint group to actually flush this out so that it can be well thought out and have the people that have been well versed in working with Park and Recs for a number of years, looking at Phil there, to actually have a voice at this table to develop what is a good vision for the city.
And I guess I would speak to that, because I do attend both. I did talk to Alderman Caravella and President Hirsch about the meeting. Alderman Caravella came to the meeting.
We weren't invited.
You're invited to every meeting, you get an agenda for every meeting.
There's a difference between you can attend versus let's have a joint meeting and work together.
I, I think Personnel Committee works on Personnel matters, just like, you know, a Park and Recs work on the Parks part of the position. Public Works works on their area, Public Safety works on their area. So, you know, I, I think that Personnel was thoughtful. They did, with the structure, try to set the next person up for success, and it was well thought out. And quite honestly, I'm insulted that you would even suggest anything other than that. Because that was the intent of the work that they did. And for you to say that it wasn't thoughtful and it wasn't set up for success and it wasn't well thought out, that's exactly what you just said. I wrote them down as you said them. And you're suggesting that none of that occurred, and I find that offensive. Not only to myself, but to my staff and the people that are on the committee. And I think that we have a recommendation and that we need to take a vote on it, because in the meantime...
No, actually, I have table on the line.
I have the floor, okay?
I know, but you're overriding what I just said.
I think we have a recommendation from the Personnel. I don't see anybody on the Personnel that's having second thoughts about it. All we're going to do is wait several more weeks and probably a month before we get the position posted. And then in the meantime, the workload on the folks that are here is going to increase, which is not good when you're trying to retain your staff. Alderman Johnson.
We've talked this thing to death, it needs a vote. I'll call the question.
It wasn't second because I was interrupted? Or it wasn't second because nobody wanted to send it back to committee?
It wasn't asked for and it wasn't offered. So where am I at now? Can I go back and ask for it? Or do I have to call the?
Is there a second?
Okay, so just to be clear, President Hirsch, what was your motion?
It was to send it back to committee. And I recommend it, Personnel, to consider inviting Park and Recs Committee to be part of this. Seems how a lot of the opposition was from Park and Recs Committee to coalesce and have a good option.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Caravella. Any discussion on that amendment? Is that an amendment or is that a motion?
It's a motion.
It's a motion?
It's not an amendment, it's a motion to refer to the matter back.
Okay, any discussion on that? Alderman Peyton.
Really briefly, I, I have my hesitation on it. However, I do understand there's some timeliness to it. It kind of feels like it's kind of rock and hard place with it. But despite my hesitancy, I do know there's good intentionality behind it. There's the opportunity to change in the future if it doesn't work out. I think the superintendent is a fine title. I almost would use like Associate Director, but this is fine. So I mean, I would be in favor of moving forward and not referring it back to committee.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor, all in favor of the motion to refer it back to the committee, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
No.
I would say the noes have it. So that takes us back to the original motion again. Candy, are you capturing all this?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, just checking in with you. All right, and then Alderman Johnson. Okay, so there's a motion to call the question, is there a second?
I will second.
There's a second, I believe we need a two-thirds vote. And it's not debatable, is that correct? It's been a long time. And I, I don't think it's debatable either, that's not it.
It's a motion, well, I don't think it's debatable, it's a motion to close debate.
Yep.
And I think it's just a simple.
Oh, is it?
I believe so. We're not amending the rules.
Well, we can Google Roberts rules quick. Greg thought two-thirds, oh, he has the sheet. Not debatable, yep. Wow, I remembered, that's scary. So it's not debatable and it's two-thirds. So all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
No. No.
I heard three noes, what is two-thirds of, what do we have, 10?
10. So we have seven, four, and three against. So that's over two-thirds, right? Yeah.
Okay, is that right? I want to make sure we're right.
Seven out of 10 is...
Is that how you get it, Candy? Because you are the official referee and counter here.
That's 70%.
That's correct.
Seven votes in favor is 70% of the total Alders present.
It's more than 66.66, is it? Okay, so we have a motion to call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No.
I think the ayes have it. You can certainly call a roll call if you'd like.
I think you should.
Okay, when you're ready, Candy, let's do a roll call.
Okay. Jensen?
Aye.
Jensen was aye. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I can add here if I like. Reeves?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Caravelo?
No.
Butler? Thank you. Hirsch?
No.
Aye.
McGaughy?
No.
Hi, Lee?
Hi.
You have seven in favor.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys want to continue or want to take a break? What's that?
I was just... I wonder... I know we're on a roll with Parks Department, but... Sorry. Chief Rip has been sitting very patiently. I would wonder if we might be able to move his agenda up.
So what you're saying is you do need a break, but just a break from the...
And I apologize, because I wish I had thought of that earlier.
Yeah, I should have too. Sorry about that.
But maybe if you don't...
Do you want to switch gears and do that one? I'm fine with that.
And then maybe a break if everybody would like.
Take a break after that. Okay, so that would be Resolution 1... Yep, 182, and that's coming from Personnel.
Right. Resolution 182-2023, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the new AEMT firefighter position description with a pay rate of up to $33.65 per hour, as approved in the 2024 budget, and I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that?
I think like four of them. Take your pick. Yeah, I'd like four gentlemen.
By right side of the table. All right, Candy, take your pick over there. Alder Person Reeves?
And I am going to turn this over to either Director Gillingham and/or Chief Rip, who've been working on this for a while.
While it's coming up, you know, you might recall in the budget process, we talked about, you know, hiring a combination position. And basically, once that was approved, and even leading up to it, there's been some conversation about doing job descriptions as the next step. So Chief Rip met with Director Schimelfine, and they got together and they put together the job description. And then we had a meeting with the four of us. AJ and I joined them, and we went through the job description, sent it to Personnel, and then Personnel made the recommendation to bring it here. So that's kind of the sequence here. And are you ready?
Yeah, we'll go from there. We'll kind of tag team here. Why don't you turn yours on as well. So this is the positions that you approved already in the budget, where we are going to be covering during the week. We came up with four days, 10-hour shifts, one going Monday through Thursday, the other one going Tuesday through Friday. So with that being said, these are full-time positions. They're filling where we have a need for coverage. We're struggling with our daytime coverage, which I think most communities that are still all volunteer are having issues. I want to commend both Josh and Lisa for the job that they did on this job description. We barely had to make any changes to it, and it's very thorough. It's pulling the two job descriptions together into one, along with what the other duties will be when the individual's not out on a call. The responsibility and who they're reporting to will be determined by Lisa and Josh, based on what the workload deeds are within each of the departments. So this is going to give us that filler during the day and augment. And again, we want to make darn sure that it's clear to all of our volunteers that this does not remove our volunteer service. This is only two positions during the week. So we are actually augmenting our volunteer service with these two full-time individuals. Chief?
Yep. So Lisa and I, again, we'd gotten together and melded the job description of our full-time tech and firefighter in general, as well as the EMS side. And it's really rough as we're trying to come up with two people that arguably have two very different responsibilities in two different buildings. But I think we've got a pretty good working relationship on how we're going to kind of share these people, where responsibilities are going to go, how projects will be assigned to make things go. And really, the priority is having bodies to go out on the apparatus as the calls come in. Right now, you know, Lisa and I, we spend a fair amount of time during the week jumping on rigs, which keeps us from doing our leadership jobs. So this is kind of the first step in making sure we can do and be a chief.
I think the important thing to understand, and I completely missed that, is exactly what Josh just said. We try to hold a meeting with our two leaders, and 99% of the time we get about 15 minutes in, and one of them has to take off to take a call.
Kind of reminds you of the TV show. Every time you're trying to have a conversation, the whistle goes off.
Yeah. So with that being said, Josh is working between both divisions as well. So many times I will try to have a meeting with him, and you just can't get the time because he's coming off ambulance all night. And he tries to be accommodating, but we're really seeing it in the eyes of these employees who are putting in a ridiculous number of hours. So we're trying to get moving forward and be able to post these positions and have vetted-out position descriptions. So that's our goal here tonight, is just to get your authorization on the position description itself. Already been approved unanimously through Personnel, but we would like the authorization just to move forward and be able to have authorization to have an approved position description officially.
And the thing I found interesting is, you know, you think about what each position does, and you just think, oh, they jump in a vehicle, and they go out and do their thing. But you don't realize, you really... All the training and certification and responsibility that comes with that in order to be in a position to do that. And we're fortunate that we've had all the volunteers over the years. Some did one or the other, and many did both over the years. It's actually quite amazing if you think the hours that it takes just to get certified. I don't know what that number is anymore, but it's a big undertaking, and for people to be willing to do that and give back to the community is really amazing, you know. And people look at us all the time, "Oh, my gosh, you guys have so many meetings and spend so much time." Well, so do our volunteers. So do our Little League coaches. There's a lot of people out in the community that do the same thing, but they're just doing it in a different way. And collectively, I think that's one of the things that makes Stoughton special.
We really don't have anything else to add.
Personnel McGaughy?
Having worked with EMTs for many, many years prior to moving to Stoughton, they are amazing positions, and I look at this amount of $33.65 an hour, and I am asking, where is that competitively in relation to other companies?
I'm very pleased to share with you that we are way above what the pay rate is. We did look at other communities, and I think we had Max out in Oregon at 20 and McFarland. So, I mean, we're looking at this a little bit different, because this is a Monday-through-Friday type position, but we are budgeted above that. So we are not concerned at all about being able to get somebody with the appropriate qualifications. You look at organizations such as Ryan Brothers, which is only on the EMS side. You know, they're getting those that are going through school, so they're paying the $15 an hour, even though you see McDonald's is at 18 or 20. So I feel us at $33.65 or a little bit below, depending upon where we land, we are definitely covered. And the benefits come with that, as well as WRS, which is incredible.
In my memory, given the certifications and the education and the renewals, may I ask how that is addressed? And I apologize, I have not been able to get... I don't know if that's stipulated in this, or if there's a plan.
Yeah, it is. It's in there.
May I ask you, can you share, is that covered by us?
Absolutely. Yes, that's covered by us. So all cost is covered by us, as well as their time. So they're able to go get their education, be certified. And Josh, why don't you add to that?
So we've... Right now, the job description is at the bare minimum for fire, as well as EMS, to be... Keep the primary rig at our licensed level. So the advanced EMT is the level that we run at on the primary rig every day, and really puts them in a position to learn to be a crew chief, to run things. On the fireside, state-certified fire one is kind of the bare minimum. And you'll see in there, there is a listing of other job or other certifications that we expect them to be taking in certain timeframes, so that they become... Kind of grow into the community and grow into leadership positions moving ahead.
Excellent, and thank you very much. And thank you for bringing this forward so swiftly.
Jean, just so that you understand, the A in the front is the advanced EMT. Just, I wanted to make sure that you saw that.
Yes, thank you.
And keep in mind, if you say that you were a former, you may get recruited.
Worked with, worked with, side by side, but not...
Okay, so what do we have here? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Any other discussion? Alder Person Jensen, you're reaching for your button, or... Oh, you're getting ready to vote. Throw me for a loop. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Do you want to take a break, or you want to keep going?
I'm on your left.
Uh? Three job descriptions.
I vote keep going.
All right. If somebody needs to step out and come back, that's understandable. So we're at R 178 of 2023, and this is the first of three job descriptions from Personnel related to the Public Works and Park and Rec consolidation, combining or whatever we want to call it. Alder Person Reeves?
So I believe we're at R 179, 2023, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the new Parks and Rec Superintendent, Recreation Superintendent position description with a pay rate of up to $83,595.20 annually, and I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Sherlucky. Any discussion on this one?
I would say the only thing to take note here is we took the existing Director's job description and added in the additional responsibilities that we talked about tonight that were highlighted in the green on the left-hand side. So it's also taking over the city forester and then working directly with the parks supervisor. So that's all reflected in here. So it's all encompassing.
Okay.
Thank you.
President Hirsch?
I guess, AJ, I was looking to try to find that, because when I was reading it, I couldn't find youth center, forestry, and park maintenance in the actual... Can you point me to where that is? Because those are the things. Because that's where I thought it was actually deleted from what used to be in the regular Park and Recs Director position.
Brett, do you know where it's at offhand? Are you still on?
Yeah, I'm on it. No, I'm offhand. No.
I can't see it.
One thing I will point out, too, though, is there was an emphasis on the parks planning end of it. The first bullet point, having a vision for parks, recreation, and trails. The second has to do with the corp. That was a big part of this, was the parks planning end of it. But I think it's a good point, Alder Hirsch, that if that is not in there, those definitely need to be two separate bullet points to be added into the job description.
So we'll do a search on that, Alder Hirsch. We'll do a search on it, make sure it's added. So we'll take that as an action.
Right, because that's...
Yep.
One that was in was the youth center, then you had the forestry, and then the park maintenance. And the other part, because it is the superintendent, and it looks like it's a supervisor of these...
Yep.
Supervisory role is not... Supervisor is not in the language except ability to assign and supervise, but it's not part of the duties and responsibilities.
We can add that in as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this one?
I think we can take a vote. And I am just wondering that I am, as a... Not a contingent, but a request to consider bringing this to Parks and Rec and just asking for any input. Obvious things missed that we perhaps haven't covered as a courtesy. And I'm willing to approve, but would love to see if there is any input beyond what we have done tonight that had just come back. But I guess that's one thing I would like to put out there.
Jean, we do have the right under the policy to do wordsmithing, so adding things like that. If it's anything that goes beyond just wordsmithing, and it changes the scope of the position or true duties of the position, then it does have to come back. But otherwise, we have the authorization at the Personnel level to add anything in, small things like the forestry. So we have that ability, if you want to review it.
Any feedback just about bringing this to... As a courtesy to Parks and Rec, for anything else?
Yeah, I don't have a problem doing that. I think, you know, you could do it informally or formally. If you want to do it formally at Park and Rec, then the chair can have it put on the agenda. And then I would just encourage people to come to the meeting with, you know, bullet points, basically. I don't think the intent would be to draft the thing. I think it's just to add what we missed, or maybe a word here and there that might clarify things. I think that's fine.
As well as to hear their input and their thoughts.
Sure. And if, at this point, timeline-wise, I don't see much of a roadblock there, because if we could put it on, since we have a Park and Rec meeting next Tuesday, I think if that would work, I think we could make that happen. So...
Yeah, I think so.
I think that would be okay.
Yeah, we just have to get the message back to Dan, so he can include it in the agenda.
I can do that.
So you thinking for all three?
Yeah, actually.
Okay, all right. We can do that. Any more on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. All right, so we're going to 180. Alder Person Reeves?
Resolution 180-2023, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the updated recreation supervisor position description with a 2024 budget approved hourly rate of $32.66, and I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sherlucky. Alder Person Reeves?
I will pass this along to...
So this one here is very clear. You can see on the red line version what we changed in the position itself. The big points that we added were developing, implementing, and coordinating, evaluating the recreation and the youth center. So all of that was added into the position description, as well as the other items in blue. On the education and training, you can see what we added there, as well as making sure that instead of saying Director, reports into the Superintendent.
All right, any questions on this one? Or same thing, if you're unable to attend a Park and Rec meeting, you know, feel free to, you know... Pardon me?
Just have to let me know.
Yeah, you can send them to AJ, and we can collect them and add them. All right, hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. The last one is 181. Alder Person Reeves?
Resolution 181-2023, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to change the title, Parks and Recreation Administrative Assist... to change the title of Parks and Recreation Administrative Assistant to Parks and Recreation Coordinator, along with the updated position description with a pay rate of 21.42 per hour, and I would move for approval.
Is there a second? Second by Sherlucky. Alder Person Reeves.
In this one, again, I'll have Director Gillingham comment, but it most, it reflects better what the position will be doing.
So with the move out to, and the changes that you authorized earlier, this position will be changing from being an administrative assistant. The position previously was helping at the front desk. Thank you for the authorization through the budget to hire a part-time person at the front desk at City Hall. Therefore, that frees this individual up, as well as the other administrative responsibilities will be moved over to our office manager. This position will be more boots-on-the-ground, helping with the recreation side, the recreation programs, and be able to assist, right now, Tony. So it'll give him more, more support and more help, as well as helping the superintendent.
Yeah, I think the idea for some of these positions, as you see in the description, is to help out with some of the onsite events, the boots-on-the-ground, some of that they've kind of been doing. And this really just clarifies that it is, in fact, their responsibility. So I think that really gives the department, you know, more flexibility. And right now, it's been kind of a combination of people, and it really helps outline the expectations.
I think the other piece of that is our recreation supervisor right now is responsible for all the programs, and those run in the evening and weekends, plus he's in the office during the day. So this person will be able to provide some relief, and that way, we're not going to wear out Tony and his ambitions. He'll have somebody else that can help him. So we're looking forward to that.
Any questions on this one? Alder Person Payton.
Don't want to prolong anything, but a quick question on the title, because they're under the Recreation Supervisor. Is there a reason that they're the Parks and Recreation Coordinator instead of the Recreation Coordinator?
Yes, because we need somebody to also help provide that support to the park side. So for example, if he's at Troll Beach, working and dragging the sand area, that's helping out in the parks area as well. So that's why we, we actually first had it as recreation, and then we added the parks in, because that, it could be duties on either side.
But they explicitly report to the Recreation Supervisor, not at all to the Park Supervisor?
Right. But it's, I mean, I can draw a dotted line on there for you.
Yeah, that's a little here and there.
Yep.
Also, there isn't a line from Rec Supervisor to Superintendent.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. I think that was it. Motion, second by Hailey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Thank you. Have a good night.